Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on June 25th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lynn-Hare.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Ron Rhodes is going to lead an invocation and Councilman John Lynn-Hare is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Our Father, as we see our councilmen gathered here tonight, we thank you. We thank you for them. Father, we ask now that you give them wisdom in the decisions they make and protect them, keep them healthy as they serve. Father, we thank you for each and every person that works for our wonderful little city. We ask your protection on all of them, most especially our police department and our officers that risk their lives for us out there. Lord, I pray your protection on them. I thank you so much for them. And Heavenly Father, we just thank you for our city and the honor and the privilege that we have of living here. Sometimes we just take so for granted, Lord, what you've given us and what we have, but we thank you for it and we ask your blessings tonight in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Brandy?
A second.
Got a motion and a second? Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Tonight, we have the opportunity and the privilege to do, for an award presentation ceremony, to present a citizen life-saving award chief.
issued a report that the city was impacted by floods. After some days of rain, it was slowing very quickly and it was well above the water bridge. Gunner Banta, H-12, got across the water bridge on bicycle and was swept downstream by the strong currents. Jeffrey, you witnessed this happen and acted quickly to summon assistance to rescue Gunner. You yelled out to other bystanders to call 911 for assistance. Virginia Allen reacted and made the call to 911. Gunner was in the creek about 30 yards away from the bridge and was hanging on to a tree limb to keep him being swept further downstream. You decided to act quickly before Gunner could be swept away, so you climbed onto a tree branch from which you reached Gunner and pulled him to safety. Police fire and EMS arrived shortly afterward and Gunner was treated by EMS for some minor injuries that he sustained. Jeffrey, your mother came to the scene when she heard the sirens because she was concerned that you might have gone into water. Everyone was relieved at the outcome of this situation. Virginia Allen's mother went to call also some water rescue personnel from the City County Park Department. This provided a measure of safety in case either you were done or been swept further downstream. Captain, our Mayor Ray Mann and I join in commending you for your quick thinking and your selfless actions, which undoubtedly resulted in saving Gunner from a much worse outcome. Your selfless actions places positively on your character as a citizen of our community. Your actions demonstrate how important it is for our community to work together in a time of crisis. As public safety personnel, we almost always recommend that citizens wait for professionals to arrive instead of risking their own personal safety. However, we realize you can't, we cannot always be in the right place at the right time. And when a citizen like you steps forward and takes actions to help another person at a great personal risk, we have to acknowledge your act of courage and say, "Thank you for the service to the whole city." So now, Mayor Ray Mann, we present to you a challenge point on behalf of the city of Park City to recognize your outstanding act of courtesy, being the first person to receive one of these coins.
So, in my time in the military, challenge points were something that were always very important and they were very well kept for being able to earn those when you got time to do that. And this year, when we came out with our new flag, I thought it would be appropriate for us to create a challenge point to award to citizens who go above and beyonds. And you really have, and I'm going to give you the first one. It's going to end today.
Jeffrey, I'm going to present you with a framed letter and someday, somebody's going to ask you, "What does this coin mean and what does this medal mean?" So, you've got something that you can show, maybe your kid someday, so. As Chief of Police, it's my honor to present you with the Life Saving Medal on behalf of Park City Police Department for recognizing yourself as a service to another person.
At this time, I'd ask the council for a 10-minute recess.
Can I make a motion and we may take a 10-minute recess?
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Across the hall in our training room, we have some refreshments and some date, just so everybody can kind of visit, get to meet this young man. It's just encouraging to see a younger person in this generation just taking a selfless act to save somebody else, and it's a true testament to the kind of young man you're going to grow up to be.
Thank you.
I'm honored to meet you too.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're going to reconvene at 7:17. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is public forum. This evening, we have two people sign up and we're going to start with Cecil. Cecil?
Basically, I guess you need Cecil Dolls, 6508 North, Randall Drive, Park City Kansas, 67219-1648. Remember that one.
I've just got a few items for you guys, and number one is Pigpen that's been riding around on the, in the roadways, what you guys call the street sweeper that you guys hired out. Your benefits there is he's pushing it out, not really picking it out, it goes out in the street. Last time he goes around, he leaves about that much strip up to the curb. You guys are wasting your money with this organization that you have. I know there's a street sweeper that you guys want. Suggestion is at least to purchase. If not, get into the, whatever the funds are, it's been years since I've remembered that one, and, you know, purchase it. You have guys that are working for this city that have more stake in the city and they take care of the streets. Now, if they see they missed a little bit, they'll back up and get it again. This guy, he's just driving down, dust flying. So, there's one thing. Looking in the municipal codes, basically, it's 13-413, clearance over the streets and sidewalks with the trees. Well, you know, I have a 13-foot fifth wheel that I have to zigzag down Randall and stuff like that. We need to possibly change that to 13.6 or in that range for people keeping their trees up like that. There's been some damage to the top of my fifth wheel and I've taken care of it myself, but one of these days, I'll be forced to, you know, on an air conditioning unit or something like that. The last thing is, for many years, even when I was on the council, the basketball goals, goals, portable ones, people set them on the curb and the kids play out in the street, or they'll set them in the street and leave them in the street and that's the way it is. Liability of somebody driving by in a truck, or if I get forced off on the trailer, to damage that. And the liability of that would be on who that's in the street, so, you know, you guys own right away from the meter, about three feet in, whatever it is. So, you guys, you know, possibly look into making an ordinance to have them remove it and that way you can keep the kids from playing in the streets and possibly getting hurt. Some, you know, kid driver, driving fast through there, don't even know it and hit them. There's a big liability there, so, take it upon yourself to figure out what you want to do, but I sure appreciate it if you would raise the trees up and get that lease, you know, purchase in, let our guys do the street sweeping with, they're dedicated to the city and get rid of the basketball goals on the street and make the folks, you know, we've got parks that have basketball goals they can play on. And that should be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecil. Next, we have Steve Brown. Steve?
I'll make this quick, I was here last, last meeting two weeks ago and I guess you guys had some audio difficulties, so we didn't quite make it. So, I just wanted to remind everybody, we've got the 4th of July coming up, I believe it's a week from Thursday, couple new events, movies in the park this year, so be sure to check that out, July 3rd at sunset in the park, right over by the tennis courts, so that'll be a very cool event for everybody. The movie is The Secret Life of Pets. Couple changes this year, we've got a comedian for our middle act in our concerts, so we've got a really good concert with entertainment, we've got a magician taking the stage at about 12:15 in the park, so just stuff everywhere. We've got the ice cream social, everything in the park is free from, we've got an RC course for kids to play around, you know, we've got six cars outrunning, no charge, no charge for anything, the ice cream's free, watermelon feed's free and everything. We had a couple things that came up at our last meeting last night, and that's the other reason I'm here. I was asked if somebody could reach out to the Parks Commission and see if we could get the, get the park mowed and maybe sprayed for mosquitoes because they're, after all the rain and that, I'm sure that's going to be a little bit more of an issue this year than usual. We're looking for judges for the pet show and parade, so if any of you guys are interested, we'd love to have a council member or a mayor on the pet show or on the, on the parade judging committee, so be sure to hit us up on that. Coming up this week, ahead of the 4th, we've got the medallion hunt and the 4th of July pageant, those are both this week, I believe they're both on the city signs and they've been in the Ark Valley News and all that. For anybody needing a schedule, will be in the next Ark Valley News, Park City Post and all the other surrounding area papers, so be sure to check that out and come out and see us in the park on July 4th, we'd love to have you there, we'll be there all day, full day event from 8:00 AM till 10:00 PM with a little bit of a break in between.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? John?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
And Melvin?
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item five under new business, which is public hearing and consider the approval of an ordinance leveling, special assessments, more improvements in the Village Estates Edition, Phase 5 Saddlebrook, Third Edition, Phase 5, and High Ridge, Third Edition. I'll open this public forum at 7:24. I'll ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak on this.
I have a question.
Yes, you just come up and introduce yourself?
My name's Neil Sandvik and I live at 659 East Sprucewood, and so I got a notice for the assessments, and my property's on the corner there, and I had my sewer and plumbing and everything was already installed, you know, before they added the street there, but I'm being assessed for it. And I kind of wished I would have come up and talked to somebody in the city just to see what I'm all responsible for, but I don't access the street and I had sewer and plumbing, you know, in the home before they, they put that addition on there and I'm being assessed for it. So, I guess I'm just trying to get an understanding of how this works.
Tom?
Well, I've got a question, which addition are you in?
I'm in Saddlebrook and I'm on East Sprucewood Street.
That should be a separate bond issue, shouldn't it? Would be separate of the previous one, I think.
All right, here we go.
My name is Beth Moore and I'm with the City Financial Group, where the city's financial advisor and certainly working on the new bond issue for this special project. So, if there are utilities or other things that are happening, hopefully others who staff and the city can, so, people, and you can, and you can never tell, and you can use, and, 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 so, if you, 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 if[1326.12]
All right, with that, we'll close this public hearing at seven twenty-eight. And Jim?
I would move then that we approve ordinance number ten sixty-five, two thousand nineteen, levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of Park City as heretofore authorized and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Okay, Tom? I'll second it. Okay. And Tom, you'll have to cancel again. Okay, we have a motion and a second and not seen any discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lenher.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsetta. Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Randy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that passes seven zero. Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it. And it brings us to item six, which is consider a contract renewal with BMX track. Doug?
Mayor and council, uh, you have in your packet a proposed agreement, uh, which I prepared, which essentially mirrors the prior agreements that we've had for the operation of our BMX track. Uh, the current operator, uh, has, uh, given notice that she's no longer interested in maintaining her relationship with the city and we now have luckily, uh, two people who are willing to take that over. Uh, Chantel Rent and Jamie Johnson, who've come up here and I'm sure can answer any questions that you have. The terms of the agreement are essentially the same as before. There has been some tweaking of it, particularly with respect to maintenance. Uh, I think, uh, that Chantel and Jamie are fine with those things, but, uh, they can have that discussion with you if there are any questions that you have or that they have.
I'll let you both just introduce yourself. And just to give some context, our previous contract expired and, and the individuals that were operating that did not wish to continue moving forward with it and that's why we have two new people that have stepped up to the plate and said they would like to do it.
Hi, I'm Chantel Rent.
I'm Jamie Johnson.
And you guys have been involved with the BMX track, so this is not something new for you. You've been actively involved with it and you wanna pick up those reins and continue to, uh, promote and work the track.
One important thing, uh, that, that is set out in the agreement is that, and Chantel and Jamie both understand that, that that's an obligation that, that they would have and that would be to be sanctioned by BMX USA. And, uh, they may already be working on that, but that really is an important element, uh, for the operation of our track. It provides, uh, the opportunity for insurance, um, and allows them to conduct sanction events, uh, which I think are real important to the operation and to, and to their successful operation of the track, uh, both for those events and then to have it open and have it maintained for use by, uh, Park City residents and, and other, uh, young people in the area that wanna use the track.
Thank you, Doug. Tom?
Well, I was by Friday night and noticed there was a group out there working on the track. Was that you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
We had, this past Friday night, we had races also, so.
This was about six o'clock, I think, since when I went by. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, move to approve the contract of Park City BMX Track Operator for operations on the BMX track at Plain Park and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
George, you would lit up and then you canceled. Did you want a second?
Yeah, I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead.
I appreciate the fact that you guys stepped up. The track is look, as, every time I go by there, there's some kids on it that you guys are having races and it, it really looks nice compared to what it's looked like before. And we've gone out there and the weeds have been almost six foot high and we had to go out there with riding lawnmowers, so I appreciate the fact it's in really good shape. In actuality, my grandson wanted, he, I got a, I got a text from my daughter about going out there and using it. He was wanting to know when the times were where the kids, you know, like somebody could just go out there as a kid and, and ride, go on the track, not part of a race. And so, I probably, since you're here, I'll just bring that up to you guys and you can let also the folks at home know.
We really, Tuesday nights, we have practice. And that is a sanctioned event, so to participate in that, they have to have a membership for insurance purposes. And then Friday nights, we race. Otherwise, we post everything on the Facebook page and any other time, as far as I know, people aren't able to go back. The only thing we ask is it's not road on wild, but.
Okay, thank you.
The worst, we get unsafe for the kids winning our race. If you guys wanna come out and try it though, we can do a longer, uh, feature.
John?
Just a question I have, uh, I'm a liaison to the Commission on Tourism and it's been a while back that we approved and funded some loner bikes out there. Are those still there and still available?
Yes, they are.
And they have different sizes for each, for different age groups?
We have four different sized bikes.
Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you both again.
Thank you.
That brings us to item seven, which is discuss and consider manhole rehabilitation east of Grove Street and south of sixty-ninth. Eric?
Mr. Mayor, Council. Yeah, um, this manhole is in High Ridge, fifth edition. The current manhole is experiencing excessive amounts of I N I, which is inflow and infiltration. Uh, the repair will extend the operational life of this manhole fifteen to twenty years. Staff has met with U M C, Utility Maintenance Contractor, and received a quote for rehabilitation of, of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars to be but paid out of the sewer fund, repair and maintenance and attached as the U M C quote.
John, I still have you. Okay. Tom?
Well, I have a question.
Go for it.
It seems excessive, uh, with all the exceptions that they wrote into their RFQ or in their quote. I'm thinking usually a manhole rehab is like five grand or something like that. Is there something unique here?
This one is extremely, extremely, uh, cracked. They're gonna have to seal the entire manhole and then go over that and double seal the, the manhole walls.
This is a fairly new one too, isn't it?
It's a fairly new one.
Yep. Okay, so there's a crack in the, in the concrete?
It's all over the inside.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Anybody else have a question for Eric? John?
Make a motion we approve this? Sorry, I'll switch down here so I'll have the words in front of me.
Okay? Tom?
I was gonna second it. I couldn't tell whether it's looking on or looking off.
So, the motion wants to approve the, the proposal of the Utility Maintenance Contract LLC in the amount of eighty-seven, eighty-eight to be paid out of the sewer department. Is that correct, John?
Yeah.
And Tom, did you second that?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
The next item on the agenda is item eight, which is consider an ordinance amending provisions of chapter eight, article one of the municipal code pertaining to procedures of obtaining compliance and abating nuisance issues. Doug?
Mayor and council, this was before you, uh, at the last meeting and there was, uh, some concern and question about, uh, provisions that referenced a right of entry into private property in connection with investigations of nuisances. And so, this is back and let me just tell you the changes from, we, I talked briefly about some of the procedural changes, changing the name to, from compliance officer to code enforcement officer, uh, cleaning up some timeframes, uh, to make the process a little more efficient for our code enforcement staff. But the changes this week from, well, this, this meeting from last meeting, first under section five, which is section eight dash one oh eight A, Councilman Lenher, when we were discussing the, uh, right of entry question that, that Councilman Capps brought up, uh, noticed that there was some language at the very beginning of subsection A of that section. And so, that has been struck through and that, you'd see that the reference there to, for the purposes of carrying out the provisions of the title that representatives are authorized to enter into and upon any premises, that is now stricken from that provision. So, there is no authorization there for any right of entry. Now, turning to section six, which was section eight, is section eight one oh nine and what, which was previously titled right of entry, uh, I have made an, a substantial amendment, further amendment to change from the last meeting to that. It's now called inspections. And what it does, uh, the, the police department asked me to at least continue that section to recognize that as it's an important part of the duties of the code enforcement officers on our staff to make investigations and to make inspections to determine whether there are nuisances in our city and in, in an attempt to give notice of those, get them cleaned up and in necessary, uh, and when necessary, to pursue enforcement and abatement. But most importantly, uh, there is, it's clear in there that the failure of a property owner to say no to a code enforcement officer who wants to come in their property and make an inspection is not any sort of violation of law. So, any person has a right to say no. I don't want you coming into my house, onto my property. And then finally, at the end of that section, there is a recognition, um, of, that the code enforcement officers shall at all times in making such inspections comply with federal and state laws, rules, regulations regarding going upon private property to make inspections. And the code enforcement officer shall make application to procure, procure right of entry and inspection in a, to a court of competent jurisdiction when such is required, uh, in order to comply with federal state laws. That means we have to obtain an administrative search warrant and we need to go to district court to do that. We don't have the, our municipal court doesn't have authority to issue search warrants. So, in the, in the event that we feel it's necessary to protect the self, the, the health, safety and welfare of our community because of what we believe is the existence of some nuisance condition, uh, we then need to show probable cause in front of a judicial official, a judge of the district court and obtain a, an administrative search warrant. Again, the police department felt that it was important to at least, uh, make, make this clear that it's a big part of their, of their duty to make inspections, but to set it, set out clearly, uh, kind of in answer to Councilman Capps concerns last, uh, meeting, that in order to go on, uh, private property without, when there is no consent from the property owner or the occupant, we have to back off and go obtain an administrative search warrant.
Thank you, Doug. John?
Uh, make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending provisions of chapter eight, article one of the municipal code pertaining to the procedures of obtaining compliance and abating nuisances.
George, did you want a second?
Yeah, I'll second it for discussion.
Go ahead.
Well, to clarify, I had no problem with, with them coming on property. I understand plain view. If they see a, if they see a violation, they have the right to handle it. That's plain view. That's simple. I also understand exit circumstances. I realize there's times when they, when they can go in there. My concern and my only concern, when I brought this up, was the right of entry into a person's home. And I'll go back again, that, that is a strict, that's a strict right of a person. If you wanna search my home, come and ask me and I might give you permission. If I don't, then you've gotta go see a judge and get a search warrant. That's, that's the law and, and we can't override that. And I, 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 I don't think the chief and I fully agree on this, but I still think those compliance officers, they work under the supervision of the police department. Their supervisors, I believe, are police officers and I think that they are probably agents of the police. I think a, a first-year law student could really make a good argument for that. Maybe not. I could be wrong. I've always operated under the assumption that I could be wrong, but I still feel like, you know, those guys work for the police department, they, they're enforcing codes and certain, uh, basically ordinances and stuff. And I just feel like that they're probably, probably, probably oughta tread kinda lightly. They're, just my opinion.
Thank you, George. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsetta. Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Randy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes seven zero? And that brings us to governing body reports and we'll start with Jim.
Just looking to the third. Okay, sorry. We're good.
Jim?
Just looking forward to see everybody on July Fourth, the celebration, so that's all I have.
Randy?
Um, the pageant is this Saturday from two to four. The deadline to sign up was the twentieth, but if there's any young lady out there that still would like to sign up, I, I'll still take your application, so please feel free to sign up.
George?
I wanna go back to what Cecil Goldsmith was talking about the trees because it's twenty-nine years ago, but it was June twentieth, nineteen ninety. I remember that 'cause my, my youngest daughter went into labor right in the middle of a hundred mile air wind and our streets were completely blocked by trees, downed trees. We learned several things through that. Uh, one thing we learned at the trailer courts over there, a lot of people come in there with a transit, they don't, they don't, uh, update their driver's license. And, uh, we had to block the trailer court off because of the wind damage and we wouldn't let people in, even though they lived there, 'cause they didn't have ID to prove they lived there. We had some looting going on. But, due to that fact, we, the council, started a program to keep those trees trimmed, keep, keep them clean. And a few years ago, we stopped doing it. I don't have any idea why, but I just know we stopped doing it. And the trees are getting overgrown again. And I guarantee you, if we had another high wind storm, our main arteries would be blocked. It, it, it was a nightmare. And we, we had take ordinance, we had taken steps as a city to prevent that happening again. I still think we oughta go back to doing something about those trees. You know, years ago, I took a, a, a course in civil law and it was about trees. And I found that kinda interesting because trees and property lines, it's really, you gotta be careful because if a tree is on your property, you can do what you want with it, but you better not go an inch on the other, on your neighbor's side or you could get sued. So, I, but those trees are out over city property, out over the right of way. And like I say again, I was walking this morning right down sixty-first street and there again, you've gotta walk in the twelve-hundred block, you've gotta walk out into the grass to get around the, a bush there that's taken up the sidewalk. And, uh, I just think, uh, think we oughta do something about the trees. And I don't know about the third, do you know? The third is I'm gonna celebrate my sixtieth wedding anniversary and I don't know if I'm gonna be there. That's all I got.
Thanks, George. Tom?
Just everybody have a happy Fourth of July. Have a safe celebration.
I have nothing.
George?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to our eleventh annual Park City Fish and Derby. We had like two hundred and fifty-two people that were there participating. Uh, I'd like to thank the donors, the actual businesses that donated to our derby and also the volunteers that came out to help. So, it was a beautiful day and I just wanna thank everybody.
Thank you. What was the record fish?
Oh, I forgot. Yeah, seventeen-inch channel cat was the longest and the three and a quarter inch blue gill was the shortest.
All right.
I have nothing tonight. I would make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.